Lunch, so I have like a tea or milk and then a sandwich, a side and chips, like eight bucks. And you just, you just pick whatever, you know, you take the clothing off and you hand it to them. There's, you know, a lot of.
So the.
Yeah.
So the person in front always pays for the person behind?
Right.
Is that how it works? Or is it optional?
No, it's optional. Yeah, it's like to, it's for homeless people or people who are short of money or what have you. It's a, it's a way to have a free lunch with dignity.
Yeah, sure.
Grab the clothing then. They, they don't ask, you know, are you broke or are you taking this clothes off?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
It's pretty cool. And then there's like this little park area that you can go sit.
It's from downtown.
I can't even see the address. I don't know how to get there. Yeah. Go ahead.
Cool. How are you?
Good, man.
Good. Which one was the nice weather?
It was not nice this morning. I was actually fed up this morning.
Oh, were you?
It was foggy and nasty as well as we were. We were up north by the scooter tanks trying to fix their phone up there. When it was down, it was, it goes like, alright, think, uh, two minutes, I'll get it picked up and warmed up again. Not a lot of fun.
Well, what do they? I'm dating a member of the club.
No, we've been, we've been pretty spoiled. As nice as it's gonna be afternoons, of course, you know, Steph's got me picking up leaves, you know, so. I got a, um, well, I used to mow for Jim's fiscal. And, uh, when he passed away, his son might come out and kind of went through everything. He had his lawn back. You ever seen one of them things? It's got a wood chipper on it and everything.
Really?
It's awesome. It's, it's hard to pull that sucker's, it's got a huge flywheel in it. But you get that thing going and it just, it's like literally like a vacuum cleaner sucks the whole leaves and it chops them up and bags them.
Yeah.
Pretty nice. Yeah.
Yeah.
I know. Uh, you seen me doing it?
No, I've seen it when Jim, when he first got that.
Oh, yeah. He'd, he'd be out there when, even when the wasn't leaves.
That's cool.
Like, I need to get a grass blade for a certain way.
He was, uh.
Oh, I know.
Very smart.
Attention to detail.
Yep. Been in the form for six years.
He'd be out there in his wheelchair.
Keep thinking I'm gonna change something in Coco.
No.
And every time I think about changing something in Coco, I'm like, this one's gonna come back from the dead. You remove that Chevrolet sticker from the, from the deck. He has some reason that it was there.
Yeah, we, uh, we ended up buying their little Chevy HHR that they had and.
Oh, you did, okay.
And he put a Chevy emblem on the hood, like drilled a hole through the hood to put a Chevy like a vertical emblem. He can't get rid of it. There's a hole there now. What were you thinking? It looks terrible.
It looked terrible?
And that was Chevy everything. I remember that I bought my Ram pickup.
Mm-hmm.
He's like, what's that in my driveway? I was like, that's my new pickup, Jim. What do you think?
I don't like it.
He had that S ten pickup and.
Oh, yeah.
He put that external tack in it.
Oh, yeah.
It's like.
It wouldn't even.
Outside the cab?
Huh?
Outside the cab.
On the eight.
No, it put it, I think it was over on the pillar or whatever. It just, I mean, it was a really nice pickup and it just, he had to have a tack.
Are you very happy?
Yeah.
Could've put a smaller one.
It feels so weird not having you next door anymore, like usually.
I'll be just laying around the shop with the raised parts.
In the shed.
I can put that.
So I'll still be there for a while. All of that stuff.
Oh, that's, that is a neat one.
I used to spend quite a bit of time out there.
World's best.
World's best.
Jesse, honey texted me. Did you?
She's the worst.
I like her.
I haven't read it yet. He's all good on eating, but she just put, sorry, we just got your message.
You don't like it?
Tell me to tell her it was postponed and so.
That is absolutely true.
And then I'll, like, I'll email them all out anyway, because I have to, but. Yeah, that's kind of what I wondered if something should have caught.
Do you guys ever see all the notes?
I did, I did.
Did you guys get an agenda?
I did not.
I did not.
And a whole packet available.
Didn't write my last period.
So.
Yeah. And you just return it to the counter.
Okay.
We have to have available for all public.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Well, we could ask Jesse, she's having trouble connecting with the person.
Even now, if you're.
Yeah.
Oh, she's not.
Got it.
I can relax.
This could be communication.
Writing.
Yep.
Those people.
I would say. Yeah.
She'll have.
No, she was trying to fly away, but maybe. The toilet. Thank you, Jesse.
Okay, Jesse, you want to come read what Darnia said? Because I can't read that. Okay. Please stamp the pugilions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Jesse.
Chairman.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Bishop.
Here.
Call order at seven P M. The Open Meeting Act is on the south wall. It's also available online. And this is as required for the Nebraska State law. The mayor and the city council reserve the right to enter a closed session at any time during the meeting in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meeting Act. Even though the closed session may not be indicated on the agenda. It is the intention of the mayor and the city council to take up the items on the agenda in order they are presented above. However, we reserve the right to take up matters in a different order. The city grant for the reserved right to adjust the order of the items on this agenda. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment may be limited to three minutes per person with a limit of two individuals speaking per topic position. Please come to the agenda or to the podium, clearly state your name, address for the record, and the agenda topic you wish to speak on. Did everyone get a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
Remove to accept the November twelfth, twenty twenty four proposed agenda.
Second.
Enter move Kimberly second that we accept the November twelfth, twenty twenty four proposed agenda in discussion. Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Turn it here. Motion carried. Review and action of prior meeting minutes, October twenty second, twenty twenty four.
We accept action on prior meeting minutes, October twenty second, twenty twenty four, and wave the reading.
Second.
Turn move Sam second that we accept the prior meeting minutes from October twenty second, twenty twenty four, and wave the reading in discussion. Turnie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Kimberly.
Kimberly's gone.
Over the twenty second?
Our last meeting?
Yeah.
I'm a little abstained.
Okay.
I was here.
Turnie move Sam second.
Carry on.
Okay, and Kimberly, you have to say. Thank you for keeping us.
I was sorry.
Is that right? Because I was like, I think I left that there.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. All right, communications. So did you ever get in touch with the bathroom guy?
So I talked to bathroom guy once. And then I tried to get bathroom guy for the invoice and the bathroom guy never left the invoice to me. So he is, I've been in communication again again. Hopefully he's still calling me tomorrow, but I feel like it's not going smooth either, so I'm a little nervous. But he was supposed to be delivering it on the twenty second, so that's why we were gonna try to have it in his claim so then we could get him a check when he delivers. But now it's not been helping that way. So I will see what happens after I do it again. If he contacts me, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it just the one? The, the double or do we have to be a three?
We'll just do the ba- double because the guys didn't think that we would be able to do both of them. So we'll start with the first double.
Yeah.
So. If it doesn't work out, I know that Big Iron has them on their clip options.
And, and we could also go back to our original plan of four parties and just have Scotty probably click it up. I mean, I mean, there's a couple of options there, so.
But hopefully I can back call him again.
Okay, all right, well. Well, things go sometimes.
And then I had, um, meeting updates and stuff. The library will meet tomorrow at five fifteen. And then we didn't have a forum at the cemetery meeting today, so, uh, they continued that to November eighteenth at five fifteen P M. And then I will be at the Courts Association meeting in Arapuco on the twentieth for Harvard Day then. So, um, and then the next meeting will be council, um, at sixteen, six, seven for you guys. And then, uh, the SCA system, guys were, we were waiting, you know, we didn't know with the budget and stuff, we kept kind of seeing. They had contacted me and they're starting to put those components all together. So he'll contact with me when, when they're ready to announce it itself. So it is progressing on that.
Um, Andrew and I had a meeting with, what, what do I call the bathroom committee?
Lovingly referred to those.
So I included, um, Mark Bottom, you know, representing the, the county commissioners. Can't, he doesn't speak for them, but he, he brings their, you know, what they're thinking forward. And Casey Crocker for the fair war and then, um, Jana, um, that McCormick was there, Andrea was there.
Nicole.
Oh, yeah, and Nicole. So we just. Basically went over, everyone, you know, went talk with, was able to talk together and. And, uh, talked about, you know, the drainage problem over there. You know, if we did connect a new bathroom, where it would have to go. Um, and you know, that would, you know, all those things, you know, really need to get an engineer involved at some point or other to, to do that project. And we're gonna have to get. It's probably gonna run as much to run the line or cost as much to run the line from that, from, from where they want to put those bathrooms as the bathrooms will themselves.
They have a problem already out there with the fairgrounds with the bathrooms. They have an overload quite often that they feel that they can't even.
The ball field bathrooms?
No. The ba- fairground.
The fairground.
Because if you put the bathrooms where we had talked kind of by like the drive, you know, the drive up thing kind of so that way everybody can share. It would have to hook to that.
Their existing.
And their existing, according to the fair board, who said that it would never hold handle it whatsoever. They have hard enough time handling their restrooms and their.
Because there's a lift station there.
Yeah, they have to have an actual lift to get to the city. And Eric kind of explained a little bit of that.
Because it's, it's a, it goes against where the service needs to go.
And is that connection completely separate from the existing bathroom and where that is at?
Yep, the existing bathroom is a leach field. Was it separate system, however you want to call it, separate system? So.
So there's thought with Mark and, and Casey, everybody was kind of, might just get an engineer involved just so that that way it's done right and we don't have issues.
Yeah, we're not saving cost on purchase, but flowing it in construction.
Trying to use it.
Right, yeah, that makes sense.
Yep. When you're wearing the first, you can sometime again wear.
Yeah, well, maybe again. Right, so definitely.
And setting it at the location that the current bathroom is at into the leach field does not also work or does?
No.
No. Okay.
Yep. So. Yeah. And Jim is willing to, um, fundraise and, you know, be a, like a connection with the whole community. Because it is more of a, um, it isn't just a city project, it's, it's also a county project. So it would be a joint project, is the way I understood it.
And Mark did state that he, they've worked on the interlocal agreement and that he was going to have the products forwarded to Fana for review. And then once they visited, they would put it on the agenda after.
I don't have the.
Yeah, I said, I prefer PDF over a, a paper copy, so. Might have to poke. Or I'll poke.
On that whole bathroom thing was. I guess my concern just simplifies like citizen relationships. I don't know if that location is necessarily the best behind there because people park, you know, when you have gangs and things over there. Behind that, they're basically walking through a park and wanting to go to the bathroom and coaching T-ball and different things. It's just, it's not accessible really if it's all the way over there. I thought we'd go over it, it would be a lot safer for this is if it looks like it's back to where it currently is.
Could be.
Is there a way that, and I don't know, obviously we'll talk about later, but like, can you connect? How can we even connect to the street?
Yeah, the other direction.
Maybe straight north.
Yeah.
It was, Eric made, yeah, comments about that. I mean, just.
Yeah.
Are they still requiring a station there or something?
Yeah. And that's what he thought the engineer would be the best to help. And then, you know, then it would work for everybody.
So still, it's still, I guess, as summary, we're still in the pre-planning stages. There's nothing that is set in stone. There's no plans or anything. We're just getting organized. Because there are a lot of people involved or, you know, county, cities. So it's gonna take a little bit more than if it was just the city or just the county. So nothing is stowed, nothing is decided. We're, we're still in the planning.
Well, then, so it's probably good that you haven't been able to get in touch with him because we don't actually know if that's the best option for all of the work that would have to go place that after there, right?
Well, I thought the ones we were getting could go with the current ones.
We're gonna.
Then they will connect right, the, the two that we have over by the ball field, those two little toilets.
So those are able to connect in.
Yeah, and two more, we, we, we already.
New one.
We could.
They want brand new, I mean, like, not portable.
Still, I'm hobbying that. I was like, I swear this was a deal because it can come right.
No, this is.
So we've, we've moved on to the long-term project discussion.
Right, sorry, exactly.
Gotcha, okay.
Yes, so the temporary ones, the temporary fix would go over by the leach field.
And it's fine to set there.
And it's fine to set there. Um, if that ends up not working, we'll go back to plan, a new plan.
Yeah.
We'll start.
Or we'll figure out, I mean, portable bathrooms, we might be able to do some type of different things that you brought up, scotting them coming in here or something, but.
Okay. Yep, yep. So everything is still in the planning stage. We haven't, we haven't fixed it. We thought we did, we did. Okay. Any other communication? All right, sending the committee reports. Andrew?
Um, well, cemetery didn't meet tonight. Tree board met last Wednesday. And they are going to identify the nine trees. They will send them to the residents. And I guess I didn't realize last time I maybe, that they have to replant a tree in that same house that they take one out. So they have, or if the person does not want it, it has to be within Jason, like the neighbors. Or somewhere very close. It can't be like planted in a park. I mean, it has to be somewhere else that's part of the grant.
Yeah.
Take it out, put a new one in.
It has to be cared. They didn't want the park for us because we have too many of those pre-trees. But like, we might be able to put one at Blackview or, uh, the housing authority or something a little different. If we do have one that we can't, one of the, the homeowner or one of the neighbors doesn't want.
What, or else?
We could do it potentially there. So, so they have different options, but they have to, um, they have to be able to qualify and know that they're gonna be able to take care of it for, I think it was three years or something like that, um, period.
Very good.
And it has to be in a front yard.
Yes.
That is.
What's a great enjoyment.
Can we remove one from the backyard and paint it in front here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Free is not free. Yeah, it's.
I'm just saying.
All these finds.
All the prints.
All the.
You may think that free is free, but free is not free.
That's all I know.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Kimberly?
Uh, so Park and Rec did meet. I have no idea what date or time it was anymore. Apparently I don't have my phone with my notes. I thought that was our, our last meeting. Anyway, um, they just kind of reviewed the season with regard to Park and Rec. All the things, really for the most part, talked about the facilities, um, and that being a good solution temporarily. Um, talked a little bit about the committee that they were going to form for the long-term solution. Uh, the girls' ball program is in a little bit of a sticky wicket, um, and so I think they're going to try to get some dialogue going on there. But essentially Chase County pulled out of the league and when they did, there's no one left for our girls to play. Um, and if they end up joining, I don't know if it's a tri-county league or what league it is. But if they end up doing that and there's like a mandatory amount of away games that they would have to commit to and. They're kind of trying to figure out how that's all gonna work out to allow the older girls to continue to play, so.
Unless they join the oval team, that would be doing that.
Right.
The oval team already is with, uh, former.
Detroit.
Yeah, so.
Not an easy solution.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that kind of was the main topic of discussion. Um, they did mention looking for some increased communication. If there are any incidents, I guess, at either location. We had a couple over the summer. One of them was very quickly and quick communicated out to the members of the board, um, and council. And the other one was not. And so there was just a lot of second and third-hand information. They weren't quite sure how to handle. So they said maybe just more direct communication at the highest level. And that was about it.
Good.
Well, good. And, uh, Michelle went over the grant and.
Oh, yes, Michelle did go over the grant for the park, thank you, renovation of the benches, which has been really good progress. There are, did you guys get an opportunity to talk about the back ten?
I didn't go look at them or anything yet because she went up and did some of it so you could see kind of what color it would be.
Yeah, so the boys were still kind of picking out the right color, but they're basically going to put a material on those benches that should be a, uh, not on the metal part of the benches, but on the concrete. That would be like a lifetime product, so it's not a paint. It's like a.
An epoxy.
Epoxy.
Kind of like.
Yeah, it's kind of, yeah, it's got some grip to it and it's like, yeah, an epoxy material. There is though some benches that the city agreed to continue doing the stripping with the power washing. And either we didn't get to it or it wasn't quite done to the level that it needed to be done to be painted over, so I didn't know if.
And the weather is market, so it wasn't gonna happen until, you know, so.
Thank you for that.
All right. Thank you.
It'll be cool when it's done. All the benches will be the same color and they'll be complimentary to the van shell as well.
I'll, I'll.
That'll be good.
Yeah.
Much better.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you. Jenny?
I don't know.
And Sam?
No.
All right, thank you, everyone. Enforcement. Looks like we have a water report.
The insurance report didn't make it.
Still good. And, um, please note we received us. Financials, Jesse?
Um, I am starting to work on them. Um, my calendar software was down for a week, so that kind of put me behind on some of it. I'm starting to get the budget, I can input and stuff, so that hopefully I can get it in the next week, so.
Very good, thank you. Any public comment today? All right. No unfinished business, so we'll move to new business. Action and discussion on development of a parking lot north of the city office. Um, Jesse did get, was able to get the information. Tom got it to her late, so. We received it as soon as she had it. So in his letter, it looks like, um, our engineers, TC Engineering Inc., is recommending to complete option one. Which I keep calling it the floating cement, but that's not really what it is.
Flammable fill. So it, it flows out so that it all fill.
That's why I call it the floating cement.
Yes.
So the lot has, uh, I don't know, it was venting, I'm not sure what it was, and they have a fill in it to, to stabilize it. And then the utter hold we have to, I think we're gonna tell them, say we have to maybe do some gravel on the, on the ends down here then. Yep, yep.
And I think that might be technically the option three. I, I think after I was looking at it, it might be the gravel part that's what we're talking about.
Option one does not get us to a parkable spot. It just gets us to a, this place will not cave in.
No, we'll can park on it.
Yeah, that's what I heard too.
Not without option three.
Option one, two, Andrew, which that amount then equals the sixteen, nine, fifteen.
Not the two.
Not two.
Oh, just one, three.
Yeah, one and two, sorry, yeah. Yeah.
Two doesn't happen if one happens, right?
Correct, for right now, yeah.
Option one, three, gets us a parking lot though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For sixteen.
And fairly quickly.
Yeah, their colleague could have one maybe before the end of the year. Is that still, is that still a possibility?
I think the original.
I think the original goal was to have that at the end of this month. If, um, you guys authorize that to happen. I have not talked to Shellco to make sure that it's still a possibility, but. On the original one, I think that was.
So as long as some other jobs haven't come along, then they may be able to do that.
Is there anything in here that says how many spots we actually get? Like this game?
That's my question too.
That's what we were trying to figure it out. And it always looks so different once there's actual vehicles in there.
And I said Sand Hills is the thing, you know, space, so the lot size is the same.
Okay.
So, I mean, that kind of gives you a visual of maybe if there has a vehicle parked there, kind of what.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Are you doing six, maybe? In one thing.
One side of it.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. I think it's probably more than that.
I have to say.
I think it's more than that. There's probably just six where the building is, probably.
Yeah, there's.
Like on one side, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah. Well, I would think probably is twelve, but they also wanted a handicap and a a bus parking.
Would the bus be in the back?
Yeah. And it'll only be parking up through the building, not back there. Right next to it, so it'll give them room, I think, to turn around, probably, we would.
So only six places then?
Maybe.
Probably.
Yeah. Cause we can't drive off, but.
You can't go onto the highway, but can we exit?
No, so it's gonna all, it will be in and out of the backside of the property area.
We couldn't go in this way and then out the, like, in the street and then out the alley, like make it one way home.
No, they'll all come through the alley right now, is what I understand.
I hope you just could could come off Main Street, I didn't think on the highway, um.
We aren't doing a cut in here, it says like go through, so.
No, no cut off this road.
Right now, no. All of it currently is gonna, what my understanding was, was gonna be used just through the alley right now.
He said something about Fort Street is too close.
Too close to highway. I thought we couldn't get a highway access, but we, because it was so close to Fort Street, but this does, to me, doesn't read that we can't have a Fort Street access.
I think, yeah, but I would say that it is very scary out there, so I don't know. This road is so more, more.
Right, I'm just saying.
Than like the other one.
We should maximize the amount of parking spaces we have, you know, and maybe we need to gather another access we can take to do it than we should.
Well, yeah, I think my concern would be people trying to back all the way out, like if they're parked towards Main and then they're trying to. Like, if there's cars on both sides, they would.
I don't think they're gonna be parking on both sides. It would just be on up against the building like Sand Hills basically is right now.
But I think long-term, I mean, you can get a high limit in order to enter in that direction and then exit out the alley, and so I think eventually that's probably.
So for sure.
This is gonna be our temporary, because we don't have cutouts or any.
Oh, we're not gonna do marked lines or anything at this point, so it's just gonna be.
I think, well, it had, I, yeah, cause it had line striping on the option five and six, so. And I didn't much help than to see what they were. And it would be dependent on whether anyway, if it's.
Right, because we could paint.
Decorating anything.
Right, yeah, anyways.
Well, then it's gonna be gra- gravel to start, so you probably need gravel.
It'll already gravel back here, so that flowable fill's been going as concrete.
Like gravel will access the alley.
Yeah.
Well, we'll be there, okay. So this remains a solid circuit?
Yeah, yeah, and you put that flowable fill in, in in the venting, as long as there's no semis or trucks that park on it. It comes and refires.
Okay.
Or trailers, you know, that are.
Well, you the existing wasn't there, but then the flowable fill is just a support, so it's located in. And then the gravel goes into the alley.
Yeah, and I would suggest in the future, we take out that grass strip and move the, move the, um. Sidewalk all the way to the, all the way to the curb.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, and, um, no, we don't have to mow it, like you said, don't mow it, don't maintain it, and give us a lot of room anyway. Um, so I would say that would be, obviously not in this go-around, but I would say that would be, you know, expand that parking lot. But if we do option one and option two, with our, you know, economic development fund, we need about three grand up in there for the year, which isn't a lot, but it gives us all those little, you know, the room for some surprises. You know?
Option one and three, yeah.
Yeah.
So that'd be sixteen, not a fifteen.
We're gonna park in lot by the end of the year, so how can we beat that?
Right.
Just the seniors, I think we.
And seniors.
It's, um, when you're gonna go east.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's that's my concern about having only one way in, one way out, seeing the seniors having to like back out and, you know.
Yep.
Okay. And priestly choir.
Teenagers.
Teenagers, yeah.
Forty-year-old, yeah.
Forty-year-olds, you know.
It's not gonna be thirty-four-year-olds.
Same. Okay, so. Do we need a motion? Well, this is action and discussion, actually. Oh, action, action, sorry.
Can you talk to the donor about that?
About.
Recently?
I.
Additional funding out to do option one and three, have.
Well, I thought the night that he was here, I thought he said he was going to donate option one. To pay that, but then I also know that he is, I I do know that he is getting memorial money from people that are doing it to the Bowling Alley. Project. I do know that once this is decided, the actual plan, that the commissioners. Said that they would donate money, and I know we're gonna turn it into the Perkins County Community Foundation to ask for money also. But all of them are waiting to find out what the actual cost and the decision is, and then they were going to donate, is the last I was told. Does that help?
Well, I just, I think at that last one. The goal number two from the donor was that that was part of the cost of that donor was going to cover.
Number two, not number one?
Well, but.
Or that amount of money?
One and three, from the.
That's what I recalled as well, the immediate like usability, wherever it's coming from filtering through that.
I actually, and I remember it separately, because I thought the donor wanted us to do option five and six. And was willing to help pay for option two and four, two and three, to get it all probed up and then the gravel out. And then let it sit until you raise enough money for it to be filled in, maybe next December, so. I'm not sure that I, I'm not sure the donor option is available if we do option one and three, but also. We get that guaranteed usable parking lot within our budget with option one and three. This is what I remember. I I remember he chose. He would have us remove the concrete out and then the gravel in it, and then and then wait a year to get asphalt put in.
He really wanted asphalt.
And I find.
I mean, correct, Sam, I think you are correct with the, he was gonna fundraise for the asphalt. That was what he was going to.
Yeah.
Fundraise for.
And if I didn't want to fundraise for it, I think there's, there's, there's still options to fundraise, especially if you wanna move out, move out that grass pathway and extend it. But getting a usable parking lot in a month versus getting a usable parking lot in a year, um, after fundraising, it just seems more economical and. And better to get a usable parking lot now.
Right, but, so from the document that I have, um, from them, it says. Fill in tunnels with flow fill, remove concrete, ten loads gravel by eleven thirty and twenty-four, cost sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And then that donor would pay for the contractor, pay the contractor or C, seventeen thousand dollars to cover the cost if the lot was purchased by eleven fifteen and twenty-four, which it was. And that was in.
Cause that's, that's what I thought, is that the donor wanted something immediately, but wanted us to, um, utilize the amount of money we had allotted and set aside for further development of the lot. Down the road, you know?
I I I remember differently, but would the seventeen thousand still allow us to extend it, or, you know, to the curb and then give another access point anyway? I mean, that's a way to grow it.
Cause then it says then like later that they would raise an additional funds, um. To add then for the asphalt project down the road, but they would then fundraise for that additional funds.
And that's where they were talking.
We need to want to gap.
Yeah, that's where he's gonna go through the commissioners, through the foundation, and then he has plans to do a dinner, supper, thing through the senior center. For additional donations, and then like I said, he's been using, I know he said that he's received some memorial money, the people that have designated it for this, to go towards that.
I, I just haven't.
I think it doesn't.
Yeah.
I I mean, whether we pay seventeen thousand here or. Or down the line, it's still seventeen thousand, so if we go ahead and just plan to move forward with it.
We might get the donation, well, no, by the time that we have to pay.
Right, right.
It's gonna come through donations for going up, yeah, I'd rather all of them for this portion.
I agree with Sam, if we get enough extra money and he gets enough donations, I, you know, remove the grass and and then complete it.
Yeah.
The spring, so that. Even better than.
Yeah.
It is, could be, yeah.
Okay, so this motion, everyone agrees is options one and three to give us a usable lot as quickly as possible. And then the rest will happen down the road.
Right. Because he figured you'd have till April, probably then, to raise money this way down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so is this a motion to accept, um, or a motion to. Enter into an agreement for the work by Shellco Asphalt and Paving? Is that the right verbiage?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I will make a motion to enter into, uh, an agreement with Shellco Asphalt and Paving for options one. And three for the Bowling Alley Parking Lot Project, in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. Can we move, Andrea, second, that we enter into agreement with Shellco to make the Bowling Alley Parking Lot. Usable for the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty. Any more discussion? Sam, have you vote?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
And Charlie?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Okay, now we have our year-end agreement that we have every year, um, City of Street Superintendent. Thinking of the operator, right, operator is supposed to be the side control. And this is what Tom.
I can see if you remember here.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's two, two of the, that's got page two or three.
No, I didn't see any changes from. Yeah.
I don't know, it's not removed, so.
We want to spend this our money, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
About two hundred thousand dollars.
So we disagree.
Yeah.
Um, I'll make a next, a motion to accept Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash zero one. For the year-end certification of City Street Superintendent twenty twenty-four, and authorize the mayor to sign. Second.
Can we move, Kimberly, second, that we move forward with Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash zero one. One, resolution for signing of the year-end certification of the City Street Superintendent twenty twenty-four, authorizing the mayor to sign. Any discussion? Kimberly, have you vote?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Action and discussion on the twenty twenty-five Nebraska Department of Transportation.
This is, it's not one.
Yeah, yeah.
And this was the one that they increased it drastically. We were paying eighteen twenty, I think, before. Um, so, and then it had the verbiage of how they were gonna determine this. The next few years will only have the three percent increase, but then they will reevaluate when that comes to do again, and so.
And we pretty much.
I mean, we can't leave this down for that price, right?
You don't want them to knock their blades.
Exactly. I was like, yeah. If you can do that fast and efficient, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I make most accept the twenty twenty-five Nebraska Department of Transportation Maintenance Agreement renewal.
Second.
Authorizing the.
And authorize the mayor to dis- to sign.
Sam, move, Andrea, second, that we accept the twenty twenty-five Nebraska Department of Transportation Maintenance Agreement renewal, authorizing the mayor to sign. Any discussion? Andrew, have you vote?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Action, um, and discussion on Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash zero two, a resolution of the mayor. And council of the city grants rescinding prior Resolution twenty-four zero six dash ten, um, five twenty-one Garfield Avenue.
Oh, yeah. Did they clean it up, or did the property owners clean it up?
The homeowner or property owners cleared them. The one that they had come, uh, over, that it was cleared when they got here, so we have a small girl or. Um, just a mileage for them coming back and forth, so.
I move to rescind prior Resolution twenty-four oh six ten, and five twenty-one Garfield Avenue.
Second. Andrew, move, Charlie, second, that we rescind prior Resolution twenty-four dash zero six dash ten, and five twenty-one Garfield Avenue. Any discussion? Sam, have you vote?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Action and discussion on Resolution twenty-four dash eleven dash zero three, a resolution of the mayor and the city council. Rescinding prior Resolution. Twenty-four dash zero six dash fifteen, um, three twenty-eight Garfield Avenue, and also property, also cleared the property.
I make most rescind prior Resolution number twenty-four dash zero six dash twenty-five, uh, and plan additions property on three twenty-eight Garfield Avenue.
Second. Sam, move, Kimberly, second, that we rescind prior Resolution number twenty-four dash zero six dash fifteen, um, three twenty-eight Garfield Avenue. Any discussion? Kimberly, have you vote?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Okay, so we finally got someone to help us out on the housing authority, um. J- Geraldine?
Geraldine.
Geraldine, yes. Fornie. So she has a male appointment.
I move to accept Geraldine Fornie to the Housing Authority term ending in twelve of twenty twenty-eight.
Second. Andrew, move. Kimberly, second, that we accept. Joan Fornie to the Housing Authority with her term ending twelve twenty-eight. Any discussion?
Do you have more to fill on that?
Do you know?
Yeah, there, this will just allow them to be at Quorum. We had one that had passed away, and so they needed at least one more person to be able to.
Okay.
So we're still.
So sad too on that, okay.
I can actually, on all the boards, there's like a total of like a hundred volunteers, and I have, I'm sitting at like fifty-one or two or something.
Wow.
Yeah, we're really. Thank you. I just didn't know how to pull that out then now.
Yeah, no, it's just at Quorum. So Andrew, move, Kimberly, second. Any discussion? Sam, have you vote?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. And thankfully we have another volunteer for the tree advisory board, Emily Poppy. She actually sounded really excited. And her term ended twenty twenty-six.
I move to accept the mayoral appointment of Emily Poppy to the tree advisory board, term ending. I move to accept the mayoral appointment of Emily Poppy to the tree advisory board term ending twelve twenty twenty-six. Second.
Can we move, Charlie, second that we accept Emily Poppy, Poppy at the mayoral appointment to the tree advisory board in twelve of twenty-six, any discussion? Andrea, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion, Karen. Action and discussion on the city superintendent position interview process and applicants. I suggest we go into executive session for the prevention of needless injury to, to, for the reputation of a individual. Oh, I can't make a motion, I suggest it. I can suggest it.
Bring him on. Bring him on.
Yeah.
The council mayor, clerk, attorney. Uh, I will make a motion that we go into executive session at seven forty-two for the purposes of avoiding any needless harm, injury, damage to the reputation. Just nothing bad to anybody, it would be great for the discussion of the city superintendent position. Uh, to include members of the council, mayor, city attorney, and city clerk. Second.
Kimberly, move, Charlie, second that we go into executive session. Putting the council mayor and city attorney and clerk, any discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion, Karen, we're in executive session. Harm, injury. I don't know. Whatever.
Recording in progress. Oh, I said that right, you know, I was.
You seen busy one? Yeah. Getting ready for winter. It is. Something like that. It's been nice. It's been a little nice. Except for last month's day. But that was actually pretty nice because I went out and chased some pheasants. Actually seen more birds in an hour than I've seen in two years.
Really?
Yeah, so. I know, well, kind of, uh, I'll bet Cam, don't you guys release birds and stuff out there? Yeah, cause Nate Dawson was saying, he's like, he's like, I was cutting my love right there and he's like, I must have been born fifty over. I don't know. And my great-grandfather was ordering them back.
Oh, my bad.
Yeah.
They're caged birds.
Yeah.
Nothing you can do.
They don't fly, yeah. We did, we did a cage hunt or came and, or even up by Kimball. And we got, we got some pheasants and we, we got roosters and hens and, uh, some chuppers. And the roosters would fly, the hens, they would kind of sit still, and chuppers, I mean, you could literally kick them, kick them, try to get the chuppers, it would flap a little bit and go back down. Of course, the dogs were just jumping on them, you know, it's like, well, there's no medium of things anyway, not those farm birds. Um, it was, it was fun, but, uh, I thought it would be, you know, a few hundred bucks just for my share. But that was, that was the last year we did that because there was no birds. And I said, well, let's go buy some birds.
Yeah. The, that's the bird we got, we got one on Thursday, Saturday.
Oh, did I?
And it was, it was really good this year.
Yeah.
It was really good.
Yeah.
Or I'm a bird, I'm a bird, I'm a pheasant, so.
Yeah, it hasn't been tough. Well, last year, that's why I went pheasant, that's kind of my, my thing. And last year there was fourteen birds and so I should have covered Kyra. And she, why can't they?
Really?
And they're delicious.
I fill them with tracks and I keep me in a ring, get a little track. Want a salmon, if I have a salmon, so now.
Uh, there's a thing called tracking, they're a hundred yards, they're easily, and they all sort of die. You see.
Actually, that's awesome, fuck you, you know, I want to see where it ends, but.
Probably five seven, yeah.
I guess you, you get flat, you shoot it so flat, a hundred yards. And I should have gone the size of Kyra all along and, you know, it shoots so flat.
Do you have an event or a ruder coming around? I know, um, I really liked it, I mean. Pompos statements, I'm not, I feel.
I'm really trying to, trying to get all these bills and all that, it's old action. Yeah, chipmunk size.
Yeah.
Little mini, last word, chipmunk and the five oh seven, and he's sitting.
Yeah, I was, I was watching something on YouTube where a guy, he, they came out with the seventeen five five six, which they net down, uh, five five six, and they net down to seventeen caliber. Running like seventeen kilo, a little twenty grams. And, uh, they got that thing up to fifty-two hundred feet per second.
I was gonna say.
Yeah. Called them mile a second. And it's, and they're easy to, to load, can you just take five five six for us?
Next, that was accurate at all.
Super accurate.
How far?
For that, probably five hundred yards. Cause I mean, yours is, you know, wind is probably.
It's probably like twenty. How many is that was? Seventeen, I mean, right. Yeah, I'm saying, right.
Nothing to it, but then just put some speed on it, it'll be out there, but then I haven't seen anything about the testing.
The most.
Just the most.
Then you go where you go across the field, well, yeah. That's has enough weight to be stable, yeah.
I don't know.
Go, go, man.
I think enough speed, it probably does. Well, yeah, I mean, as long as it's, probably as long as it's super sonic, it's probably all too stable. I, once it's slow, interesting.
That is a weak game.
Yeah, the thing is, is, um, hornet is not making it. So that's the problem. Cause whatever hornet comes up with that's, that's gonna go down. Yeah, I was saying like that twenty-two caliber, but.
It's beautiful, what is that, I remember.
It's a twenty, it's, it's, uh, it's just a, like a, it's a bigger casing, but it still fits in your AR pattern rifle. So, and it's, it's just a twenty-two caliber. And, uh, but it's supposed to be a lot harder. Yeah, it's kind of the AR version of like twenty-two to fifty.
Yeah.
So it's, there's a lot of different things, I don't know, I, I don't get too excited about this thing. Almost different part of it though, because it's like, yeah, it's like ninety meters, twelve eighty obviously. And then like two, two, three, five, five, six, uh, and then six point five, that's, that's about like you, like a bull gun to that. Yeah. And, uh, that is a awesome weapon, it's great. It's heavy enough to, it doesn't really, it knocks it down, but.
Very active, so it's safe. There are a lot of very active stuff there.
Oh, yeah.
And a lot of people are at six.
Well, I'm not excited about it.
The other I heard is, um, maybe not so much in the United States, but South, um, all Mexico's operators, they're made super.
They're made super?
Yeah, because they need, um, uh, we all check out, and I know you're gonna say, but they're made super. And so almost every farmhand across Mexico has.
Really?
Super because of the rules.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why you're still seeing nine eleven, maybe nineteen eleven is still in, um, they're made super because.
Really?
There's that much ammo and.
Just floating out there.
You usually think of it.
Well, you don't see it here.
No, it's, it was surprising, I was looking it up for, um, a race count. You know, I remember I go running down at twenty-three, I was like, well, should I stick around for another thirty, thirty super? When I started running something, I didn't know my twenties, that, and the reason it's still around. Because I was thinking in my head, it was a dead car, just from like one period came up.
Yeah.
And you know that for fifty years, that's everybody saw before, all they saw.
Thirty is the bird.
Yeah, yeah.
For those that can, oh, yeah, I mean, that's pretty strict, the, the bad, the permanent. And some of the guys that go out there and twill and stuff, I mean, you can't, you can't bring your own gun. You gotta use, you know, the outfit or brand or whatever. Yeah, we, we, that, and, uh, well, these videos come out like answer that, where these freaking muzzles are running around just beating crap out of.
Homeless muzzles?
Yeah, smashing, uh, same. Two people, you, you just find yourselves. You should, and you, well, I did politicians, I said, oh, I'm trying to do Wednesday. And they were, you know, you know, I mean, you see that reason because, you know, those people are uncivilized. Your kids are raising women uncivilized.
Because that's what they're from.
Yes, all, you see, now the civil is making rules that make sense from a civil, they stand on one. But they don't hold up outside of civilization, which is.
Exactly.
Why, because they're not, they're not interested in your civilization, they're not interested in your culture. They're therefore chaos. And their religion teaches them, it's like, okay, you want stuff, come on, do it yourself. Yeah, that's, uh, uh, it's crazy. I just, I just like election, way of doing, hopeful for the future. Same here, I, I should say that because.
The same thing.
Yeah, probably jump.
Yeah.
Suspicious. What about the twenty million votes for Joe Biden in twenty twenty?
Oh, he pardoned himself. Did you see that? He pardoned himself. Andrew dashed it, it's kind of a little turning. So it's not, it's sealed, our presidential, whatever happened with some of the lawsuits, he goes, Trump, America, some kind of stuff, he was doing. He's sealed, he pardoned himself.
That's always something filthy for somebody.
I wouldn't pardon him.
That's not suspicious, you know what I mean? And he's. I'm a pardon. Did you leave a message, did you? Yeah, but I pardoned myself. Pardon myself.
Not to say it felt bad.
It's good.
It's redacted. I don't know. What was that?
Maybe you're talented. I bet you this painting's gonna cost you pretty much, you know, it's five hundred thousand dollar chicken scratches, you have to sign it for, I mean, that's obviously a long time, you know. They like buying your painting, you tell your old man to, uh, you know, do this little thing.
And they've got, um, the FTX, uh, all the, they're not taking part with the FTX, the digital currencies scheme and all of that.
Yeah.
And there's a lot. It's, yeah. They did got Epstein, they did, all of those things, you know. So I think, I think they need to time themselves, but, uh, you can't just do information, um, you know, you've got to let it out, it's slower, because the news cycle, I think, goes a bit before. Unless you really just want to melt everything, it's on the air. I would handle it, if I was Trump, I, I would handle it, you just want to be here for the reading.
Yeah.
I think you first, first you say, all the wars resolve, say three other jobs, more of the, handle the rain.
I think you, I think you drop the Epstein question first, just to say, these are the people, that's what they do. Then you release January sixth, what happened on that. Um, yeah, you could throw it there somewhere, and then, um, nine eleven, JFK, everybody stopped. These are the people that you put your trust in, they're the stuff we do. By the way, all of them, Bill O'Keefe, I mean, you know, America's, you know, Jeffrey Epstein, and Saudi Asians, black men, my justice, all, all dirty, uh, everybody, and all, we, you know, to all pray.
Yeah, I don't know, we'll, we'll see what happens in this society. That's crazy.
Yeah.
And the people who are involved, it is crazy. And how James made a statement, like, people that's ever.
Yeah, people that, people about to. It's officially not law, I mean, you don't get it, it's without, you know, sell your souls. And look like Taylor Swift. How does she go from like little girl conceivable person to the most popular star ever? Way here, never asked, ever was. We don't, we have a bar, we're gonna do the model, I'm a girl, listen to it. You will not play Christmas music before Thanksgiving. And you will not listen to Taylor Swift in my ass. You did, you meant to say the verse, please.
Yes.
That's her favorite holiday, that's not defile it, but sing three hundred songs over her, for you. It's funny, I got to know her before you, just got her little. It's very good, but.
Taylor Swift says this.
I know. And you are.
Yeah.
I'll have a home in school on your kids.
That's funny.
You guys listen to that, I told you.
I have one out of my brain, I have some old memories.
Yeah.
That's it.
You have one standing, that's it.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah. Stuff, I have a funny, just, on the tree, that's it. Maybe it's so cool, like, it's like it's a fire. Like, something goes up, like, there's something fantastic, and fireworks, it's crazy. You got a real tree last year, that was. Who are the governor? Andrea.
What?
I'm, 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 I'm governor. Just built a bed room. So you're, you're.
You pay your ten dollars, you know, that one?
Really?
Uh-huh.
Just throw it back, pick up the wrong one.
Last like two months, in a sprash. It's fun. There, there was a lot of trees, not the same experience, but it's fun.
When you go out there to take, take more out.
I took a man or, what did I pick up? Made hot cocoa from a cut tree down. Gave the, Mike was ten, time, we gave him a, I was sorry, I gave that to him, and. I remember. Trade a hot chocolate, when I can chop this tree, I will. But it was great, it was so much fun, it lasted forever.
And it wasn't perfect, it wasn't just a perfectly symmetrical tree, it was, it was marvelous. Yeah. And it was about the long bear's.
Crazy hard department. They're like, you go to long bears, they want bear.
You gotta bust it up with a person, make sure it's just about half of them are walking here. We used to get us like a, well, um, it's not enough to, Garcia on the ground, I don't want to solve this. Like, uh.
That's my. Yes. We must say, with all the wins.
Yeah. Squirrel didn't win there. You probably gotta check that period for a while.
Scott, I think squirrel was heading over the edge. I didn't get to go around the one squirrel, I'm gonna be honest. Five seven. That is, that would be a clear violation. I lose my mind. Squirrel. Holy char.
Holy cow. Your kids doing swimming next year again?
Yes.
Yeah. Trying to get Savannah to do it, and she just likes lifeguard, so watch, and you both have it so hard, but she could be a swimmer. Trying to get Savannah to do it, and she just likes lifeguarding, so watching, can't be both, I have this daughter, she could be a swimmer, see what she's willing to do, so. I think it's a good, good program for kids. You know, that's kind of one of those things where they had to decide between softball and swimming team, and softball. Being a little girl, all swimming bad, like, that's very good, being a good swimmer, that's like a lifelong skill, like, you know, if you get on a lake and seeing someone, you know, drowning, or something happens, and you go to try to water a swimmer, that's a, that's something that can save your life, you know.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people that don't know that.
Yeah.
Like, they get in the water, they're like, you need to ever teach you how to be anything besides go like that, you know, it's, you can swim in the ocean. That's a really weird thing, yeah. The galaxy, I'm scanning. Those ones. And there's like, coming from a kid, it's only, kind of giving a shot, and you have. They couldn't be, it's wrong.
No kidding.
Sorry, I don't feel like to fire out. I just, what if you want, you want a shot, and then, it's, we don't give out all the drugs here.
It's in the shop, yeah.
There is. I'm just prepared, I guess, there's something, like, yeah, because I know that, uh, one of his other employees.
Yeah.
And then, there's something to, it helps keep them going, you see.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember one, I, I picked a guy at one time, and he was a, and he was a, I don't know, you know, and by the time I got him out of jail, and, and he starts getting shades, he's like, man, he's like, we're not gonna make it. I'm leaving here, I'm gonna, he's like, I seriously, I need alcohol, and he was about twenty-three, something. It's like, I thought it was sent to your blood, it was pure alcohol, like, that's great, and he was fine. I mean, some, I, I forget how it all went down, but, I had him, I had to take him to the hospital, and then give him medical care, because jail would be big, like, this guy, starts going, you need to, you need to, I'm like.
Oh, this bad.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, you forgot about it, that's how bad it was, they mean, fluids, you know, major medical conditions, so it, it ended up costing me like, five or six hours, they did, they, um, you know. I think we actually, I think we actually bonded around, and just gave them a home, so it worked out, oh, they can't, they, this guy, we got.
Yeah.
Just bombing themselves.
Yeah, you're, you're, we fired the bus, I, I just want to go home.
That's hilarious.
Please, please, or, like, at least I money that I, that's funny.
Yeah, it was bad, and they were trying to draw the line, and I was a man, it was collapsing, stuff.
Real stupid.
Useful that shit, that shit, uh, is.
Big?
Yeah, nothing that, I mean, my buddy did, trying to grab a whole deal, like a wizard, ended up, I don't know, off the road, rolled over, he went back or something, so.
Didn't have sauce here?
Yeah, he lived.
Oh, by the way, go.
Well, yeah.
It's too bad.
Weird couple, actually, they inherited a farm, they were from Louisiana, and they inherited a farm, and so that's, you know.
Well, that's, what's his name?
Oscar? He worked for us, he was driving, shit, he worked a lot.
Well, he fell off the pit.
And that, but that's, uh, you go up in his neck, all the way down, and he was, he was, had a party, and a full bucket.
Yeah.
That guy was something else.
I don't know if the other guy died, I know Wes died, he did, he did that, he did all of it.
Is that what I'm saying, true?
Yeah.
She was.
The other guy, Wes?
Do you want the ground house too?
I don't know, he did it all.
His parents built, uh, built the house out there, and it sold it down like two times, you know, it, uh, it's kind of a cruel place, actually, they've done something with it, but. Him and his little buddy, they just sat out there, they turn it all the time, they get bites and all busts, and it's like, well, one of these gotta leave, there's nothing to go with them to go. They, neither were that camera out here.
It's nuts.
So you guys promise to stop, right?
Yeah.
And Wes got to know that. Yeah, it's just amazing, uh, Corey, the, yeah, night that I, well, he went to court that day, and then he got thrown back in jail, and I went, bailed him out. We cleaned out his house, and it was, the dumpster was over half full, and the empty beer cans.
Yeah.
And he had, and there's like a wall on the front entryway, it's all, I mean, now the house is totally, except for this, and like, wall about like this, and he just threw the beer cans, they just reed in there, and it was, it was. He was doing pretty good for a while, and then he got a thing, he's wrong, grabbed a drink, started drinking, you know, and, I don't know, but he was like, nine, twenty-three, eight, two, I think he was high.
He was way up there.
Yeah. And then, yeah, I mean, I'd say, I talked to you, but, I hope that I mentioned, she was awesome, for a long time, drinking, smoking, like that. It's a little bit different, yeah.
So, I can go away, I'm drinking.
Yeah. I, I gotta figure it out, yeah. But, it's not like one of those things that you need to, motion.
No.
Not that, I don't know. Is that you? Looks here, just screaming there.
Staying in his phone, yes.
Know his cancellation, is that what it is?
I don't know, they seem to think that, we can hear him out there, or whatever, I don't know.
Um.
Oh, and when it started, all that.
Um, yeah, I haven't seen him around, I mean, he's still.
He was a veteran, probably, I mean, if it was.
I think, I see him go in there, I would do.
Yeah, I was, I mean, it's full.
Uh, I don't think he's missing out, he can shake a few hands and just be baby. Have you worked for West Central anyhow?
No. Consider embarrassing, if you're still.
I'll ask him.
Ask me, however, right?
It's weird, it's the state. And I had, somebody else ask me about that, but, so the state, the state's like, controlled that, and I think, I mean, we can't do anything without them.
Parks.
Parking lots, I mean, uh, every time you're on, you currently work, but then, it's, they're not, like, the snow rule and all that, and like, weed control and all that. Inside city minus six responsibility, like, such a, each entity, and then.
Which is funny, because they're responsible for, you passable.
Right, and, you know, they, they, if they get to do this agreement, they could literally, no, what I'm saying, like, is like the concrete, you know, it's all over, they'll go cut it out, no, they'll make it, so you can drive it, and you think it's snow rule. Would be something that, you know, that also means the highway's maintained, it's impassable, man, like, were they able to lay it up, drive through town?
Yeah, they would, they could.
Yeah.
It's like, I called him, asked about, I mean, I know the guys don't care really well.
Yeah.
And, like, if, I, like, when we were having issues with, well, they put that one building up, and, maybe, they just had a drainage running over, honestly, should have, it floods. And I called, called up, and he kept me down, I was, I mean, I mean, I wanted to be, he was, you know, the truck, he.
Right.
We were walking, he had me coming across, I mean.
Yeah.
And, yeah, anyway, he had the prison workers come up, and they dug a trench, and, I mean, they went and did, had their engineers come up, the gold, and, like, work, but, they had the prison camp from Cook.
The work ethic, yeah.
Yeah, and work ethic, and they, they came up, and, I don't know, they spent two, three days digging all that out, and they put it down, it's a lot better.
Yeah.
But, anyway, I, I got all the contacts there, so, but last summer, not last summer, it was summer before, um. The, uh, weeds, sunblock, it was sort of terrible there, between Logan and, like, Red Cars from our office, and, like, that red, red. You had some, and, I mean, you couldn't see, and, we, I hired the secretary, and she come, come up to that south side one time, and she said, that is dangerous. She, if you were in a car, it was really bad.
Yeah.
Because you couldn't see westbound.
Yep.
I mean, you had to pull clear out almost.
Get your nose out of the highway.
You had, I mean, or the eastbound, you couldn't see, because you had to pull almost out to where you were gonna get hit by the westbound.
Right.
And, I said something, and he just immediately, I had to call him, and I just asked him, because, uh, the guy works for, they're mowed, he, although we're not technically responsible, he says. They don't get paid for inside the city limits, because he said, we, we contract that, we just, what we're responsible for is what we, what we contract with the guys that mow the dishes.
Right.
So they're not gonna do any more than what they're.
Right, that's the main issue.
Yeah.
Well, that's understandable, and, anyway, so I came from down here, and he just wanted to sit there and argue with me, I heard, oh, yeah.
Right, yeah.
It's, there's a lot easier ways to handle, you know, a lot of situations that we got, that are unnecessary.
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know if we need to stop bringing in the Big Ten plus subscription once all it rolls over. So many of the guys, that's one good thing for us, and that's more important, collegiate sports.
I've seen a post, I didn't have a chance to dig into it, but it's something about, for them, maybe the team hasn't responded very well, but, like, cool. Putting, uh, big offensive coordinator, or, or, center, so, he's still, he's, he's, had to end yourself.
Yeah. Uh, they, they gotta figure something out, because it's just.
Wishful.
Yeah, and, you know, it's, and it's not like we're, you know, playing, going up teams, you know, I mean.
Yeah, it's, you know, they're fired on, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and as far as the odd of those, I think they're playing all, you know, all conference teams, I think, during the season, so, those are the ones that count, you know.
They're fun.
Yeah, they're, they're, really good, it's exciting.
Yeah, they're game, but, I guess.
Yeah, we got, we got to go to that night, the.
I don't know about that.
Was this, sorry, oh, they played on the field.
Yeah, they played, uh, in the. That was awesome.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That was, I mean, probably some of the worst officiating I've ever seen, that was terrible.
It was just, very, very good, I mean, just bad calls, I mean, from where we were sitting, we could see everything, and we weren't really close or anywhere, far away, we couldn't see stuff. And everyone, if you knew, I mean, something would happen, about three or four seconds, and get a body, and you look around, put the flag, and it's like, you weren't getting around, it's like, others are getting right, it's like stairs, and people are getting so mad. It was still fun, but I mean, it should have happened for actually, you know, she's this horse, please, yeah, but they do this drum thing, they fly all the drums up there, they do the stuff, and they synchronize, synchronize the drumming. That was pretty cool, um, I got to show them, uh, West Palm that night.
They had a pretty good article, you know, on paper. It was a couple years ago, and they come here, when they first did that, but, yeah, he's, he's made a business out of it, Mr. Big Brother, so, yeah. Wolves pay two ways, those who do math, and those who don't. That sums it up, huh?
That's the truth.
And that dude does really good, huh?
I saw, I just saw that, you know, it come up with twenty million bank runs.
And she was like, she had a billion dollars, and she still won twenty million in the hall.
And she went, she never did that, she, uh, she paid Oprah a million bucks, her Oprah's foundation.
A million dollars.
To come out and stage a divorce. And you're gonna run hard, economy.
Yeah, thank you.
No, that's what, I print one mentality, which you're right there.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's a good move, man.
Isn't it, because it's, well, eventually, it doesn't, it doesn't eventually impact them, and, uh, I feel like, it's, uh, I mean, they're just making money from interest, you know, and.
Yeah, how it works.
You see, uh, Elon's already started to start firing everybody, and, they, she paid all of them, someone said, I mean, all of them, uh.
All the student janitors?
Yeah, the janitors, she's trying to get people to come, they were stupid, I mean, even they haven't.
And all Trump has to do, his whole rally at Madison Square Garden, just fill the place with thousands of, and it was like, it wasn't like fifty thousand people outside, and seventy-five, seventy-five, I didn't even get to go, yeah, it was there. Yeah, and they call it a Nazi rally, it's like, pretty sure the Nazis realized they weren't waiting to do this, why, but it's very, you know, now. And half his family can do it, you know, he's jaded, white, and that, things, like, I prefer from racist or Nazi.
Oh, yeah, they're, they can move moves sometimes, I mean, I was just, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I lived out there for thirty years.
Really?
South from Chicago.
North. A little bit of Baco, from, uh.
Where?
Baco.
Where?
Baco.
Okay.
Baco. Just one small, small, bit.
Um, yeah, dude, dude, you know.
So we just had this last weekend, days that I actually lived. It was just like eight hours, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, with the, weren't that far from. You get Santa Barbara, you're close to it, right?
Yeah.
Over hill.
We went there and then went over to Cali, and like.
Okay.
They did that, a couple of years, funny.
Oh, quite there, it's just a quiet town.
Yeah. We went to Santa Barbara, we wanted to do guitar shops.
Yeah.
And Hollywood and down Santa Barbara, I think we did that, too.
Yeah.
It's good.
In-N-Out Burger.
Just something to.
Yeah.
Kind of, cause you.
Out here.
You're seven.
Yeah.
We land that flight.
Exactly, yeah, the street's beautiful, quiet. It was cool.
Well, Marlon, yeah, I remember patrol.
Well, Marlon, yeah, I remember patrol. That's how you met sometime, I'll just listen to your podcast or something, music or whatever, clear your mind a little bit.
Okay, so, I did some, um, town, and then it's.
Kids used to do that.
Okay, guys, photos blown up, hurry up, blown up, we got, um.
Yeah, kids used to play other games, like Fugitive, you know, yeah, we get called out.
Oh, yes, if I'm Fugitive, and he starts playing.
We'd play in the snow, and it's like, you know, right across the courthouse wall, and. Not leaving checks, of course, we knew where you went, pretty good on you. I remember my first time working here, I was, I was right now, a kid. And, uh, we pulled over to pick up one of the kids, and there was about six of them in the back to pick up, and they were out over there. Just done, we turned it now, and, uh. We guys didn't, oh, we're playing Freeze Out. Freeze Out. Yeah, see, a long weekend lasted, and I can say, it was the middle of winter, it was like twenty minutes.
Oh, man.
There was like a freeze out, and I was like, like, the Californian mind did not comprehend what the game of Freeze Out was, I was like. My recent buddy about it, I was like, oh, man, I was like, weird, like, what am I doing down here? That was, that was the winter of twenty ten, twenty eleven, I don't know, it was snowing around, July, March, and it was a rough one, it was so damn cold. I'm like, what the heck, what I'm thinking, but we got to get out of California, it's just, it'd be too much. Steph's got a bunch of family in Denver, and I called out, I was a little Californian, and I was out in the ocean, you know, battling their options. They're almost worse, they're tricards, it's almost worse than California. I, I would agree, I think a lot of Californians moved out there, or ended it, and. I mean, you drive down the, down freeway there, Route twenty five or whatever, like, at least in California, if you're driving a semi truck. Or a commercial vehicle, you have to step in the right two lanes.
Mm-hmm.
But you'll be going down twenty five, and there'll be some dude in a freaking ten little truck, going right over the fast lane, going forty miles an hour, and say. Why do you need to do it? You know, maybe it's, you know, through the law, and say. There needs to be something that says that you can't be in that lane, cause there are people that do wanna go through that high rate of speed, maybe forty, fifty miles an hour. And you being there, still in a freaking obstacle, where the road is a problem.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
Pretty keen to go downtown, man, and not much use here.
Out there, and.
There used to be a long mall to go to. Some Bush Park or something.
Yeah, sixteen street.
Yeah, sixteen street. For New Year's over here.
Just kind of an outdoor, cool place to hang out, I think, yeah.
Used to be.
Kind of like how, like the Haymarket is, like, that, like, the train station on.
A lot bigger.
A lot bigger.
Like even those other bars, you got.
Does everything go on?
Well, like, they, we were getting a ride from, from cab to the cameras all the time, or that night. And he's like, oh, I dropped you over here, you just had to walk, and we were gonna go to this home bar, and I was like, alright. And. Then I realized what we were, we just wanted to be here, and we had a couple of ladies from Lincoln, and then. We all met, and your wives, your girlfriends, and, and, uh. Always seen this, this feeling of the beer signs on, so we just walked, let's go to hear me a beer, and I like walked in, and I'm like. Standing in the bar, and I'm like.
Is it a gay bar?
Yeah.
I had a feeling it was weird, I told him. This is the bar that you live in, the line outside?
Yeah.
And then went to the restaurant.
Yeah.
And, like, a big, big root guy with a freaking ladder, and all, he's like walking up, and I'm like, oh, man. And I was like, okay, you're gonna come to them? I just, he spelled freshman, I looked at Wes, this other kid, my kid. I said, I think we went in the wrong establishment.
Yeah. Excellent. And we, I mean, he'd taken our money, he'd been drinking drinks, and I'm like. And I slammed my beard, and I was like, let's get out of here, and then we were waiting for the cab to go home, and. And so the people, like, jumped in mine, I mean, the people on the line, but that's what I didn't like, and he just jumped out, and he needed a little. What you're saying, and he just, well, these two black guys, and this, like, he's four picked at the top run. Kind of, and he's just sitting there, and they're screaming, hollering. And also, I don't know, they started to kind of wrestle through windows, and they got out, and the one started out, that is, I mean, you could have seen. Everybody, I mean, we all, there was some, he was pulling down, and. About that, he pulled his hand out, he didn't have it, and then about that time, there's about four or five of them left, other guys, but they grabbed, there was a court there. And out toward like the seating area, they grabbed metal chairs up there, and then they were just whacking. The cost didn't even get there, and so.
They'll look longed up.
Pretty much. They always got their four tops out there.
Yeah.
And then they just got their pickups out there, they got their ass with them, took off, the one kid, uh, he ended up getting hurt worse than. It was one of the days, but he ended up taking a chair to the end. And it was just, he was like holding the guy or whatever, and got back in his head, but it's.
Yeah, no thanks.
And I, you just see some. Then we were there one night, and, uh, something got screwed up, and the hotel was hungry, stayed up. Up in, uh, Rookville. This West, I mean, I would stay there, and suddenly, they screwed up the reservations, and we got there late. And, uh, it was about ten o'clock or whatever, and. Didn't get off work in time, and there was just going out the weekend. Anyway, we were trying to scramble a fight, and I don't think, we didn't seem as, I mean, I don't really get it, it just came up, I thought it was. Sitting there breathing misty air last morning. You know, we had this girl by, and there was a pretty good location, and ended up shooting, so it's. Really, this, you know, it's, yeah, it's a whole different experience.
Well, we served for that in La La, get that pony track, and I can see no one up there. That would be interesting. What's that?
Get over the side.
Yeah, but I hope not, they won't.
Yeah, so it's fine.
I think it's still a good one, but. Yeah, they, they're gonna have a little problems up there. Well, Brian Beer, she went to your work up there, and he starts tomorrow, I think. So his last day at Sheriff's Office was Saturday, I think. Yeah, he was gonna have two days.
Who's that, oh, yeah, Gary King?
Uh, Gary King? He's from La La. She, he worked, he was with the state patrol, and he's, he's worked everywhere, and he's, I don't know, he's like seventy one. Thirty five, thirty old. Cool guy, and he knows his stuff, but he's just old dad, you know, but. You know, he's, he's jumping all over the world, huh? He's got the dog in there, hair all over the place. But. It's just hard to find help, I'm probably in my life, I'm just so short handed all the time, having to work every weekend, nights, holidays, and stuff, but. I'm just getting tired of it, you know. Had to let it go, but. Old Beer, she wants to keep, keep popping, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just.
Sit down, no.
Over there? What's that?
They moving over there? No, he's staying here.
So, driving up there for a week, you're working, Brian Beer, too, huh? Yeah, he's, he's gonna work for a while, you know, so, but the thing is, you work there, and you get out, and you're shit, you go. Don't have to be on call, or that, uh, where you're not quite sent here, you go home, still on call. Anything can happen, with your phone rings, and you gotta go back to work, and that's here.
Yeah.
We get short handed, there was a time when we had a deputy, but. That was a while ago. Hello, hello, is this you?
He was cool. Yeah, he, 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 and he's still, he's staying there, I mean, yeah, he's, I mean, he's got three daughters in school, and. Well, his wife, she's from Imperial, so I don't think he'll be moving further away, cause they live in Florida before, and now she's too much. As for anything, they work, they live for purpose out, I mean.
Was she from the Imperial, Kevin Newer? He's good dude, actually, well, one of the deputies, you remember Duncan? Yeah. He quit down there, and he, he took a certain slot out of jail where the cook. So, he's driving from Imperial to Cook every day, or whenever he got work, you know, but he was getting kind of stressed out, and. I don't think, I don't think the sheriff will go for a term down there, which basically is.
Little, uh, Robbie Brown, I think, probably the one.
Problem. I don't, I don't think I wanna work for him, so Robbie's a brutalist guy, but I don't remind you of Austin. I don't know. I'm just speculating.
He used to take Cal cur out on here, but.
What's that?
He used to be great, he got a rental, up nine, and he'll do it.
Yeah. Nice guy, fun guy, knows everybody, I mean, he would be, he probably would get a hundred percent of the boat if he. You know, somewhere around here, and for sure, down there. I don't know, but. Yeah, Craig, Craig Paul, he was shit down there, and I was your class, he used to work for my dad, and he went down there. And we're never around him.
Uh.
Was he gone the other time you got there?
Yeah, right, Sullivan, Sullivan was down there, um.
True. This is in our, two thousand.
That's who, well. With, uh, newer, he would walk down La La, but then he went to, and took out.
Oh, right, Sullivan.
Yeah. Um, yeah, Chad Sullivan, or. Well. He, well, I just knew, I met him through. Uh, we were kind of joint friends with, with him, but, um. He was white, he was speed up, working, like, third, and I feel like he, like, ran a route after, I don't know. And then we kind of just all got to hanging out, just, or whatever, and. And that, that was the time when he, he ran, right?
Now, then. Was that two thousand eight? Yeah, so two thousand twelve.
But sure enough, after that, I don't remember, I, I remember being, I've been over a week over their house every now and then, and now they're divorced.
Two thousand ten, that's when the election was.
That might have been, well, I mean, first starting, now, I don't remember exactly when that, when he even got beat out of La La, but, you know.
Yeah, I almost, almost said twenty ten, yeah, maybe twenty fourteen.
Um, yeah, it's still before that.
Yeah, because Kevin had taken over down there, and the boy Justin was going to be in the academy at the same time I was, and so we carved a way out there. I think, I don't know if I'm right, yeah, he was.
Is he still down there?
Justin?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I had been down there a couple of weeks ago, my firearm certification, qualification. But, uh, yeah, he's still, uh, still doing it, that's him, Robbie, um, Michael Dees. I'm sure he named Dees, he's from Juanita area, he's old too. He's, he's a good dude, um, Robbie, Justin, Mike, Dad, and Dungy, who left, and the sheriff, you know. And the PD down there's got. I don't know, I think two or three guys. They're tougher. Running operation. Earl Sheen, Ryan, Ryan Odenisky, I got some of them, but, you know, Ryan, and, well, anyway. He should have been dropped, I'm sure.
Yeah, that guy, a long one for that sort of deal.
Yeah.
Um, the best one, you know, too. And he was, you know, bad at space. He's doing a lot better now.
Yeah.
No, he is fine.
Uh, he is fine.
Probably should have tried the treatment center in California before he did this. Really screwed up. We don't have the time, probably, Justin, he's out of two.
Realize you can't act a certain way without consequence, I guess, I don't know.
Were you able to land that on the birds the other day?
I did, yeah, I think I landed about forty five minutes, it was pretty good.
That's good.
I would have been done in about forty minutes, but I couldn't hit my third bird. I waved one real bad, and myself a nice one.
Nice.
Well, I gotta do, like, it's like more like a backpack style vest, and so you know, they got a little dip thing on and stuff, and I carry the water bags, like, for my dog and stuff, and. It's got little pouches on, well, I had a water hose around, like, metal bags, you know, and I had the water hose around this side, which is stupid, cause. She's running on the side, and I'm sure where you're going, and I'm like, well, I came, I quit on the bird, and I put it on that hose, and I didn't slip off. Right as I pressed the trigger. Press the trigger, and I'm like, I just, oh, that's gonna be a freaking bruise. The next day, it was just like, oh, gosh.
That's embarrassing, I go to learn.
That's a many bruise.
Oh, yeah, I mean, when it first happened, I mean, it was, it was literally just the exact shape of your butt stuck on the water.
Yeah, I hope you don't have one other time in my life, and I was the first one that shot shit again. Oh, my, I'm glad I shot him, but it was really cool, I'm not seeing dirt on my body, and I was holding it, laughing.
Yeah, classic, classic, Roger.
Is that house, did he, did he have that house?
No, it's not.
We are moving the house then?
No, the last one, that's that one, that's that blue one.
Yeah, that was, yeah, who bought that?
My mom, my daughter, they did die, who doesn't butcher any patches, which is next to me.
I know there's some foundation issues, we're working on it, it's renting it. They didn't actually sell. So it's a nuisance, and there was, they got stuff piled everywhere, and.
Yeah, and then, it's the point where, you know, like, well, Western goes around, and they. Look at the ordinance, and they decide that something's out of compliance or whatever, and then it gets declared a nuisance, and you gotta be somewhere else, so.
One of those things, um, yeah, there is a.
Yeah, that one, it should be one of the, should get torn down, hopefully.
One on the corner right next to it, uh, Red House?
Yeah, that's.
Is, uh. It's on the rack, and those trees, isn't it?
Kevin, yeah, you're going to the one on five twenty one.
That is, yeah, probably eventually it would matter, but, because he, he, uh. He, uh, moved that house, uh. Trying to think where that came from, now.
The little blue house?
Uh, the little blue house?
No, yeah, he owns that, but, um, but he put that house there, because it was the middle school, a big house.
Oh, yeah, okay. Where's that house coming from?
I don't think, um, like, I watched, built a foundation, and then he set the house on top of it.
Yeah, we had it right, we had, like, we had, like, um, right diagonal from the, little bit.
Right diagonal on the, from the south.
It's where Manon East grew up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I had a brother tipping my tongue, and I was, I was waiting to say the other, thanks, my other shoulder, my. Rainbow, um. Oh, Dwight's. Dwight, really?
Yeah.
That, when Dwight tore that, that's Dwight's.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, when he.
Those are the old ones.
Or the hunters were good at.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And when he, when he, when he built that new house, then Kevin bought it.
Didn't Hanes install that?
Uh.
Didn't Hanes install that back after that?
That used to be, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, because Dwight was still on that thing.
Move, we can move to executive session at eight forty six.
Second.
Andrea, move, send the second, that we can add the executive session at eight forty six.
Any discussion?
Jeremy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Motion, Karen. Got that, Jesse?
Yep.
Action and discussion on the steady supervision and the process.
Sorry, he's making a noise.
Go ahead, Sam.
Listen.
Like, I didn't write it off, I thought Kim was gonna do it.
Ah, you were taking that one with us. Um, I'm happy to do it, uh, so I will make a motion to move forward, um, with a. Public interview to be determined at a later date with Scott Miller.
Kimberly, move, Sam, second, that we move forward with a public interview with Scott Miller, actually, probably Jeffrey and Scott Miller.
Thank you.
Legal name?
Thank you.
At a date to be determined, any discussion?
I just want to say thank you for everybody who applied, and people who, we have reached out, or, you know, it's not, it was not, obviously, not an easy process for everyone to go through, so thank you for caring about the community.
John's come.
Yes, thank you. All right, Andrea, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion, Karen. Action and discussion on ordinance number twenty-four dash ten dash zero one.
Uh, I make a motion to table, or does, are you going to make a motion for table or just station?
This one, I think we want no action, because it's actually the current ordinance, right, and it would come back fresh.
What if all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I said nothing.
Sam, takes it back, we'll let this, um, fall. All right, action and discussion on their, their wage recommendation. This one, do we need a table? You can do either one. All right, we'll let that also fall. Did everyone get a chance to look at bills and claims?
Yes.
Justin, please note, everyone had a chance to look at bills and claims.
And we've accepted bills and claims in the amount of ninety-four thousand, six forty-six, ninety-seven.
Second. Andrea, move, Kimberly, second, that we accept bills and claims in the amount of. A loss of place, ninety-four thousand, six hundred, six hundred and forty-six dollars, and ninety-seven cents, any discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion, Karen. We are adjourned at eight forty nine. Thank you, everyone.
Yes.
Scott, do you have one more?
See one more?
Yep.
Recording stopped.